We're going to go ahead and call to meet into order. We have the budget over due by our town manager.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, before you is the final fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, for voters. Just to recap, legislative department commissioners, looking down, the only change is line item twelve oh one oh one passed. The ten thousand, that was the cost difference on the redistricting or the election. Total expenses, one hundred thirteen thousand and thirty. Twelve oh one oh one, that hadn't changed from the beginning. Town manager salary, the only difference is I am not taking a increase. And the total is one hundred thirty-nine thousand five fifty-one. Administration, the only difference is, or two differences, three percent quota pay increase, along with the elimination of the front desk position. Admin totals forty-eight thousand five eighty-two. Finance department, the difference again is a three percent pay increase. Little finance department, eighty-four thousand seven oh seven thirty-two.
What the, um, day increase, uh, three percent quota?
That is correct, yes ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you say you eliminated, uh, front desk?
Correct, yes ma'am. That was, that's line number eleven oh one oh seven. Moving on to professional services, the largest portion is legal fees, which is sixty thousand. By item fourteen oh two point oh two. Total professional fees is hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred. Office expenses, no changes there, be five thousand two hundred. Now, community engagement. If we go down line Main Street, is one thousand. Chamber donations is one thousand. Meeting engagement, two thousand. Garland Haywood Center donation is fifteen thousand. Nothing on the clothing donation. The body part is twenty-five thousand. EDC donation is one thousand. For a total community engagement of forty-five thousand. Public safety, the thing's the same, total one thousand eight seventy-three forty-four twenty-three. Operating expenses, twenty-two hundred twenty-seven thousand nine oh five. Police training, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred. For the grand total of two million two hundred eighty-seven seven eighty-four. Public works, across the board, three percent quota increase with one exception, and that's when our director, Mr. Deontay, was promoted from supervisor to director. Total of four hundred forty-eight thousand eight sixty. Maintenance is fifty-nine thousand five hundred. They get some clarification on the mosquito control. That monies is, there is actually a twofold. For the town, there's actually a aircraft that flies over and sprays. We were trying to get the exact schedule when Princess Anne is in that scheduling. For a household or homeowner, they can simply go on to the county website, and it's ninety dollars per year for each property. Trash, eighty-two thousand. Street maintenance is one hundred thirty-two thousand. Equipment maintenance is nineteen thousand. Total public works, seven hundred forty-one thousand three hundred sixty. Town parks, the only change is, is the election house maintenance and rehab, which is item number four thousand two point oh seven. It's in there for thirteen thousand. There is a grant for eight thousand towards the rehab. Which gives us a total of one hundred forty-nine thousand seven fifty. Code enforcement, eighty-two thousand five hundred. Just to remind, we have had a new code enforcer start about a month ago, Mr. Tim, and we will also have our new, um, planning his own and also start in July first. Debt services, total debt is one hundred forty-three thousand. Town activities, uh, change, or something we're working on, the side improvements, which is four thousand three point oh three. We are working on the, uh, to have this completed in the next few months. Total of that is one hundred three thousand. Expense, grant total is four million one hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-three ninety. General revenue is three million six hundred fifteen four five five. Police Department grants is a total of three hundred fifty-four thousand three fifty-three. Town grants is two oh nine thousand. Total revenue is four million one seventy-eight eight oh eight. Expenses again is four one three seven one six three ninety. Revenue is four million one seventy-eight eight oh eight. The difference and the balance is forty-one thousand six hundred forty-four. Two notes that we discussed, there will not be a tax rate for the year. The only addition is, we're going to have a trash fee increase by ten dollars a year, which breaks down to about eighty-three cents a month. Any questions? Yeah.
So it's eighty-three then?
Yes. Yeah. A month, it's ten dollars a year increased. So it's, the increase is eighty. It's not much, not much at all.
It's ten dollars a year.
Did we find out if we're at the rate at the long bill? And the rate on that? We're, we're Georgia public, we're trying, we're about to break.
With eighty-three?
We got, Russell will ask the, the county landfill charges per ton. Or are they charging us per ton at the current rate or the previous rate? The history, they've always charged us the previous rate. They give the town a little bit of a break, sixty dollars now, it was fifty-seven dollars last year, and they fifty-seven. Right, up fifty-seven, stay behind what the, going to, uh, it's, that's. We should inquire like that if we ever have need with them to, to give us that couple of three dollars all the time. We always had, never had that.
What was, uh, what was your price?
So, say the rate goes from fifty-seven dollars, sixty dollars. So instead of us paying sixty dollars a ton, we would then move up to the fifty-seven. Save three dollars a ton, very dumb, but that was historically always, we stayed one, stayed one.
You know, reminder.
Right, whatever it was prior to the increase.
Say one fight.
We're checking until you see who's still get that home, hope that anybody.
What question? That's all.
We ain't got over the service of Jordan Park thing.
Yeah, I heard it said.
There's nothing there, no water and no electricity there. Can we give, man, spend one good dollar.
So no water there, no electricity either.
That's not a front footage, they're charging us, the county charging us.
Was it a house there before?
That's probably a parking, that's what parking is.
Do, do you have?
Where the park, where the park?
On the window back there?
Yes.
They probably got you.
And, and make sure, make sure that there, that, that that's not a street light there that's being included in electricity. That already be included. That's, that, that figure's coming from somewhere, so it's got to be a deal somewhere to get it to send it over.
It's been after years, I mean, after years.
You know, I'm saying that seven hundred which is holiday has got to come from somewhere. But if it's front footage, then they're going to charge every, if it's more than a lot, they get, you get.
So like, I think everyone's a funny. There's no light there or?
My, my other question is still, why, why is the street lights in town Prince St. Coast one hundred thirty thousand dollars a year or somewhere? Do you can, can figure out a way to, because my, the streetlight rely is half, halfway doesn't work all the time, and it's dim, it's not very bright, so we're not getting a money. I just, I just say that's very ridiculous. And why we can't somehow or another get a new, more efficient lighting in these streetlights. I think it's available, I think it's technology that.
I will, off when the email.
So is it just, is it just those streetlights, or is it the streetlights throughout the town?
I guess it's true, which we're starting to, a lot of them are still.
I know the one that's in front of my house is, it doesn't do anything. It's, it's lit up, but it's not brighter or anything.
I, I agree with the commissioner, that's something that definitely needs to be investigated.
It'd be nice, happy to do this, but you've come back, so hey, we safe.
I, I think the town's paying way more than it should. Town manager needs to check into that.
That's why I have all, all taxed.
I would do that. And you can go the more efficient way.
Open it up for public, um, comment?
Hello, everyone. Um, as you know, I'm, here's the name of the Main Street manager. I would like to ask you to please reconsider a thousand dollars that's allocated in the FY twenty-six budget. We've received fifteen thousand for at least the last twelve or fifteen years. For the last six, we've requested twenty-five, which puts us more in line with the state's expectation that our budget is funded, a third from the state, a third from the local municipality, and a third from private donations. Each year, we do raise that money through private donations and through state grants. Um, but where we fall short is on the town's contribution. This is a, our organization helps the town secure and maintain your Main Street designation, and there's a cost to that. The reason our organization partnered with the town in the first place was so, was because the town didn't have the capacity to run the program, and as a nonprofit, we have the opportunity to raise additional funds. So through partnerships and programs and sponsorships and, um, grant writing and, uh, leveraging funds, for every dollar that you contribute to the Main Street program, we raise another ten, eleven, twelve dollars a year through all, for every dollar you contribute, which is an incredible return on your investment. And, and just to give you a little bit of an idea, and I have, I hope, I hope that you have taken a look at the, um, all of the documentation I've sent you. I've sent you our budget, I've sent you our through the town manager highlights from our last fiscal year. One of the things that's so important for the grants that we go after and for sponsorships and that sort of thing is have unrestricted match, and that's where the town comes in. Your funding provides us with that unrestricted match, which allows us to leverage additional dollars and bring those dollars in to support community and economic development in the town. And, and we're bringing money to the table then, it doesn't cost the town anything. As part of the state-designated Main Street program, we are the town, and, and Main Street helps you do this. We're, you're required to have a paid manager, required to attend multiple professional development trainings and meetings throughout the year, required to attend a national conference, required to have insurance for volunteers and special events, required to support the five points of development as outlined by the state and national program. And, and this year, we were able to attain national accreditation, which is a significant achievement. Fallsberry lost their national accreditation, the town of Denton lost their accreditation. They dropped back down to affiliate status, so did the town of Annapolis. So it is a very rigorous process, and we meet all of the qualifications. And just to highlight a couple of things, um, just in, in, just over a year, we had six new businesses open downtown, including Guerrero Boxing Club, Sisters with a Twist, Sugar Water, The Washington Hotel, Slaney Nails, and now Mara Local, which is right next to, um, Sisters with a Twist. We've engaged and organized hundreds of volunteers who have contributed over a thousand hours of volunteer time in our downtown district, helping with a variety of projects and programs. And there is a federal, um, amount to help you quantify the value of that volunteer time, and that federal amount, when you multiply by all of our volunteers and the hours that we, that they've contributed, and Main Street organizes all of that. We work with U M S, we work with other town, out organizations in our town, other community partners, to leverage that support, which is valued at over thirty-five thousand dollars. There is so much more support and money that we're bringing to the program and bringing to the town that we wouldn't otherwise have. And we, we like working with the town, I, I don't want to labor this. Wait, I will fully read you every, every bullet, every highlighted, um, thing that I've sent you. If you would like me to, I'm happy to do that. But one of the things that I also want to mention is that, like, we help with your sustainable community designation. Without your sustainable community designation, you wouldn't have access to a whole bunch of other grants, and Main Street is a big part of that. We helped to implement the sustainable community designation and help you meet a lot of milestones that are set forth in that plan so that you can maintain that designation. We worked last, the last time you received your, um, re-accreditation or re-appointment for that sustainable community designation, I worked very closely with Tracy and other town staff to make that happen. And Main Street's portion of that, uh, designation is significant. We help you meet those milestones so that you maintain that designation, which allows you, the town even, to go after a lot of other funding. We help with sustainable community initiatives, engagement, obviously events throughout the year, all of those things. And, and if I'm reading this correctly, um, and looking at your, the difference between your expenses and revenue, you could, if you chose to, and I hope that you do, fully fund our request this year and still have an eighteen thousand dollar surplus. So I'm just asking, we, we like doing this work, we like working with the town, we like working with the businesses downtown and community members, but obviously, we need support to be able to continue that. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. I, like I said, I'm happy to read you all the highlights from the last year, if that's what you would like me to do. I have sent six pages of documentation that, that all of you should have received that explain how that money is used, and, and a copy of our budget. And we don't have a fat, ridiculous budget at all. So we have thirty-two thousand dollars that goes towards contracted staff, which includes the manager, our bookkeeper, interns, all of that, for thirty-two thousand dollars, which is obviously not much. Four thousand dollars for required professional development. Four thousand dollars for admin, technology, and insurance. Thousand dollars for required dues and memberships. We have to pay the national membership fee and that sort of thing, too. Ten thousand dollars for community events throughout the year, and that is, that's a small chunk of change when you look at all of the different events that we put on for the benefit of the community downtown throughout the year. And fourteen thousand for promotions, marketing, and advertising. Five thousand for business retention and improvement, and five thousand for downtown beautification. It's, it's not like we're, um, being frivolous with these dollars. We're using these dollars to do a lot of good work in the community, and I hope that you will reconsider the thousand dollars that you have allocated now and fully fund our request.
Do we have any more, um, public comments?
If you can come back with ten times, just a question on grants from the police department. Have they been awarded or leased, uh, expected? A lot of money to be, perhaps on the hook for, considering my alcohol, we need to play it. Not to, for the applications to process, or they are in hand, or they have given the hundreds.
I want a hundred cents for any combination of both. We, we view the budget together.
I mean, the PAC grant's a hundred thirty-five thousand almost. I don't know what it is, but, uh, they totally get it, so if you take a hit to that, part of your budget.
Do we have any more public comments? Can you go get the best from the, the worship? I'm sorry.
Good evening, Walter Woods, I'm Main Street Princess Anne President. Uh, I wanted to echo the words of our Main Street manager. Main Street is essential to the viability and vitality of this community. We do so many things, and she stated so eloquently, the number of things that we do. And I just want you to really honestly look inside, because we're about community, we're about the family, we're about connection, we're about support. That's all, that's what we do. That's what we're here for, to make sure that this community is thriving and that we are able to afford and do, and put Princess Anne on the map. On the map, positive light, making those connections, and like you see, we're, we're, we're competing with larger cities that have more bandwidth, and we're obtaining credit accreditations that they're losing. Something's going right here. Something is going right here. We're doing what is supposed to provide of our organization. Make sure that the town of Princess Anne is a vital and active community as it compares to other Main Street. So I just want you to, I implore you to really take a look at our request, read through the documentation. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, reach out to Miss Sammons. We can, we can direct you, give you any answers, questions, and help you, uh, make your decision. But it's all up to me. Yeah, I do thank you for your time allowing me to speak tonight. Hopefully, I was able to touch someone, somewhere, in some way, in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
I have a question. Uh, this is James Holbrook. Uh, my question is, if I heard correctly, in reference to the, uh, increase in the trash collection, uh, do we have the option to opt out of trash pickup?
He's asking, maybe we have the option to opt out of the trash pickup?
No, I think the explanation, the, the, J N has an explanation, where we can give an explanation on that, because we've had this question before. So we should explain why that, that's that.
Good evening, Mr. Holbrook, it's in our code about the trash, uh, that is automatically charged regardless. Uh, there's no option out, but it is in our code, uh, of, that was, that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I hear you.
I know that's been brought up several times. Here you go. I bet you'll say something. Yeah.
So, um, Mr. Holbrook, thanks for that question, and it has come up in the past. Um, one of the, one of the reasons that we have it this way is, um, two, two things that, that I've understood to be. And one is, it would be very hard for our public works department to differentiate between who is paid and who hasn't. And, uh, neighbors who have a page are going to stick trash everywhere, it's paid, neighbors who have paid, or whatever, things like that would happen. At one point in this town, they had stickers on the trash cans, and if you paid your trash pickup, you got the sticker. People's trash cans were then being stolen, people would steal the trash can, but do it with a sticker. Um, so different things like that, but also to keep the cost down, if we do for everybody and spread it out over the entire town, then the cost is at a hundred fifty dollars a year, which really breaks down to less than a couple of bucks a week, uh, for two trash pickups. So I hope that helps explain a little bit why it is the way it is, but, you know, I think you could probably imagine how hard it would be for a couple of guys on a truck to ride around and remember, hey, we're doing this one, doing that one, and adding it, take it away, that kind of thing.
Uh, from that perspective, I, I, I do understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments? And I have a motion for, um, a call for a German of the meeting, for our public hearing meeting. I like the call for order, um, our special meeting for our, um, adoption of our twenty-twenty-five dash zero three FY twenty-six budget. We're going to turn it over to, um, now attorney, or is it our manager?
Well, so the procedure for the adoption of the budget would just be, um, as we just did, go to public hearing. Um, and then that proceeding of public hearing was a public notice in the newspaper. Um, and then that proceeding of public hearing was a public notice from the newspaper. Um, and then at that point, it would be um handled as an ordinance would be. And so the first reading, as far as I understand it, happened previously, it had some adjustments. Um, second reading commenced just here, there were no further adjustments. Um, so you all free to go ahead and do your form, if you'd like to take a vote. Um, it is presented in the form of an ordinance, we have that ordinance. Sorry, we had a wondering.
Right now, we're just making a motion to accept it.
Oh, I will read the gentleman question. All right, great. You can do it like this. Yes, it's conducting the meeting.
All right, so I'm going to make the motion for us to accept the ordinance, um, number two zero two five dash three zero for our twenty twenty-six uh budget.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
If the motion is back in. And this is a um another chance for us to speak on the budget. Anyone has any questions or concerns about the budget?
Yeah, I will go nothing, but. So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, it's um so I just wanna, I just wanna say that in a lot of, throughout the year, when they came up that police department, that there are things that come in that have to be amended to the budget. And obviously, if they don't come in, we gotta work on that, gotta figure that out. But I think in years past, our police chiefs have, have always been pretty well on, and they'd rather come to us with a new grant that they got than put it on there and hope to get it. So they're pretty certain the grant gets due. Um, and that kind of leads then what I want to say about any of the other things, and especially to um our Main Street. There is an opportunity for us to reevaluate this and come back and look and talk about it. Um, I got the emails, it's not really a budget, it's more just a line of good line items, of things that, that are being done. Um, I think the commissioners are expecting a little bit more um transparency from the Main Street. And I'd love the opportunity to have that conversation more. And in, in E V, there's certainly an opportunity for us to reevaluate um any budget, budget line item, but specifically that one, what it's being asked.
Okay, well, I, I wish that you had asked that previously when I supply the budget, but I, I move that's how our budget is done every year, and those are the items. And, and as what we are responsible for giving you is, and that's a more detailed budget than, than we've ever been requested even in the past, that does show exactly where that money is going. And, and the town's portion is, is what we've given breakdowns of before. And, and I can tell you very easily where we spend the town's money, if that's what you would like for us to do. So the, the town, the, the important thing when you're looking at grants and that sort of thing is the, the having unrestricted match. Because when grants come in, as anyone who writes grants can tell you, when grants come in, they come in for very specific purposes. So having unrestricted match is important so that we can fill in the gaps as needed. But town funding, this, our state funding helps to pay a portion of the Main Street manager's salary. Town funding helps to pay staff, including the, our accountant and helping with interns and that sort of thing, and helping with community events. When we do community events, there's a big cost associated with that. And there's a big cost associated with advertising. So a portion of the town's funding goes towards advertising as well. And that's not just advertising things like a, a new business that's opening or whatever, but community events, programs. We advertise events that the town puts on even. There's a big cost associated with all of those things. So I, I don't under, like, when you have a proposed budget, like you do now, for your entire four million dollars, um, you don't have receipts for that proposed budget for the next year, right? So, but I can tell you, I can tell you what my paycheck is. I can tell you how much we spend in advertising. I can tell you how much it costs to do the midnight muskrat dive. And all of those things bring positive uh results for the town of Princess Anne. One of the things that we do repeatedly is send out press releases about good news stories that are happening here, which quite frankly, help to combat a lot of the negative stories that we constantly have going on in town. So all of those things come with a cost, right? There's a cost associated with all of those things. So if, if what the town wants to do is say, we want our fifteen thousand to go here, that's a conversation that we could potentially have. But, but it's the uh coming, coming by those unrestricted funds is critical and you're investing in your Main Street program. We, I, if we build the town for every time town staff calls to ask our opinion, ask for our expertise, ask for, ask for historical information, ask, ask for background information, which some current town staff, because there have been a lot of turnover over the years, we're, we've been the consistent ones that have been here through the last four town managers. There are a lot of projects and programs that are going on that we've helped to inform your new staff as they're coming on board. And we will continue to do those things. But for a thousand dollars, you get Main Street help for a month, and that would be it. And, and I'm not trying to be um confrontational at all. I'm just saying, like, there's a real cost that comes with these things. And I, I don't you, you have a surplus, according to this budget, you have a surplus. And, and you could choose to fully fund our Main Street request. There is an expectation from the state that you are contributing financially to your Main Street program. We work together all the time. I'm in meetings with Jay, with Isabel, with other, well, Isabel's not here anymore, but we work with the, with the police department, we work with the public works department. We do all of these things with your staff. I don't, I don't understand how you don't, I, I don't understand how to explain it a, any more than I already have. I don't. And, and to think that with all of these things, you, what you, what you see in the bullets that I sent you are results. Those are things that are actually happening in our town that would not have been happening without Main Street. They just wouldn't.
Do we have any more um comments or concerns on the board? I like the call, call for a hundred. Call in favor. In name. The bump for a German. All right, well, that's a big break.
Right, you must be, the first session made. It stays one gym, it's a full two thousand and four o'clock. It's time from six o'clock P M. And that's officially called the work, but I kind of understand yours, we're like. But what do you believe we require land from a necessary pro America? As you're the father of a Christian, one nation, under God, and the devil will never give you that to crawl. Thank you. Stand with it, I'll put a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
Do we have an amendment to the, and I'd like to amend the work session to include our um comprehensive, county comprehensive plan um update from Jesse Brewer and his team. Um, I think he's prepared, so we can move that to the first item.
There, second.
Second.
Amendment. Second. It's nice, but it you know, so they're interested in boxing, um, I think those goals to each um period. Like the whole record, record, right? There's a card you have sent two days before, George, it was a pre-ventator.
I know most people are here in the room, but I don't know Jesse Brewer, the planning and zoning director for Somerset County. Uh, we were here uh probably about two years ago, feels like now, when we were uh first started the comprehensive plan update process. We're back, and we had had a few delays, but we're back now, and the plan is now fully in grant form. Uh, I gave Jay two copies of the print, of the print book, if anybody wants to take a look. It's very fun, three hundred and fifty page reading, if you're so inclined to do so, uh. Captain G, you want to do it that way? I'll just give you a quick run through of where we are and okay. Uh, we started the comprehensive plan update in June of twenty twenty-three. We have done working grant chapters instead of releasing the whole plan at one time. We've done working chapters throughout that are published on the county website and the comprehensive plan update website. So as we go along, we were able to solicit public feedback and comments. We had rock boxes here at town hall, and Chris Field, the libraries, and U M S. Um, we did solicit a very good amount of uh public feedback during the process throughout the way. We attended the meetings. We held a visioning workshop here in Princess Anne uh last January to kind of uh get the vision statement for what the plan will be. This plan has not been updated since nineteen ninety-six. So older than Catherine and myself here, it's a, this is something that's supposed to be updated typically every ten years, no later than twenty. Twenty-eight years, twenty-eight years later, here we are. So a little late than that one. Uh, kind of just go through some quick highways here and note this. The first chapter kind of just introduces the new state uh visions and the planning legislation, which requires to this that every, every municipality we fight in the building authority is required to have a comprehensive plan. And it warns you on how we got to where we are and what the reason for the plan is. Chapter two kind of just is summary information that goes over the demographics of our community and what kind of makes up our community and how, how we're here, more or less, the history of the county. Chapter three is probably the most interesting to both of our municipalities. It is the county and municipal planning chapter that uh kind of goes over the annexations, the growth, the priority funding areas, and the goals and objectives for both of our municipalities. Uh, the Princess Anne comprehensive plan that we pulled from was the two thousand nine plan, and Chris Field was two thousand and ten. Uh, chapter four kind of goes over economic vitality. Uh, we utilize the Somerset County Economic Development Plan that was completed in twenty twenty through the Economic Development Commission. It analyzes the retirement, living and healthcare, the seafood and agricultural industry, the tourism, and the skilled trades and community or college that make up what pretty much is the economic drivers here in our community. Chapter five highlights some affordable housing data. We utilize some data that was available from the Department of Housing and Community Development. It is a goal in this chapter to actually conduct a housing study for the entire county, because we have not done one in over twenty years to analyze the uh housing issues and the housing stock that we have. We know majority of the homes that we have in this county are historic and old, so that's a goal. End of plan is to do a full housing study. Uh, the, this chapter informed us that we have a need for fifty-six new units a year on average for, for the county to keep up with the housing demand. Oh, excuse me. Chapter six highlights the community facilities, which includes our parks, libraries, services, amenities. Uh, a big portion of this is drawn from the Land Preservation and Parks Plan, which was completed in twenty twenty-one. It highlights the, the broadband infrastructure and the county's goal to expand internet coverage and accessibility through, throughout the county and our municipalities. Um, also, a big portion of this chapter is devoted to the landfill expansion as the landfills continuing to grow and expand at a quicker rate. And a big uh target for that is growing that infrastructure there, which will be needed to sustain growth in the county. Chapter seven highlights the population of the county, which, uh, as we know, is primarily three sixty-three D L I road, and a four thirteen and U S thirteen that runs through our uh communities. The roadway network and kind of the modes of transportation. I can't remember offhand, but I believe the study was over ninety percent of the community relies on individual cars, individual transportation for the community. A significant portion of the comments we received was a need for greater public transportation. We've heard this before, and I know it's a continual thing that we're working with. We had uh partners from Shore Friends that actually attended one of our meetings that we had, and that is an identified of the goal in the chapter is to continue to analyze the public transportation and other needs for transportation in our community. Chapter eight goes over the sensitive areas, which is a required chapter from the state. The streams and buffers, as we know, critical area, uh agricultural preservation and wetlands and forest lands are a big portion of the county and make up a large percentage of the preserved lands that we have here in Somerset County. And it continues to grow as we work to preserve more areas for, to maintain overall nature, but also grow in a more manageable way. Chapter nine was first added to the comprehensive plan in twenty ten as an amendment. There's a requirement of all counties and municipalities that provide water services in, in their jurisdiction. It is a water resources element, which must also include water and sewage data. We're at the same time that this plan is ongoing, we're also updating the Somerset County Water and Sewer Plan. This plan is updated every five years. It says on there for twenty twenty-four, but that will now be twenty twenty-five. Our goal is to have that finished by this fall also, as we work with uh sanitary district to analyze new areas and opportunities for the sanitary district. Chapter ten is probably, I would say, at least for most professional planners, the most important chapter of this plan is land use. It's how we're going to encourage uh meaningful development in the county areas that need revitalized, priority areas where we'd like to see more preservation, priority areas for more development, and kind of go over things that have changed since the last plan. Obviously, we've had some land use changes, lands have changed. We've seen a lot of new developments come up since this plan was last done in nineteen ninety-six, so. Go to the next slide there, it kind of highlights some of the existing use and different charts. And we have all these maps are in the plan, if anybody, the commissioners or anybody in public would like to. We have these maps on file in the planning office, we'll be glad to let anybody take a look at them. Uh, the next one kind of highlights some of the existing land use modifications to zoning. This kind of will implore zoning changes that may need to happen. So typically, when a comprehensive plan is done, usually we'll help inform a rezoning, which may happen. We're not currently looking to do that for the county, but it is a possibility that once you've done the comprehensive plan, it's usually a goal that you want to do is look at what has changed and what should change. And the last chapter was a new chapter we added throughout the time as we've been going, was the addition of the priority preservation area. As we all know, solar development was a major hot topic in the Atlas this year, and it has continued to, I'll say, impact our community quite significantly. Uh, legislation was originally that requires counties to have a priority preservation area to kind of help shape solar development in a kind of a more controlled way. It also allows the county to maintain more of the agricultural track, transfer tax money. Instead of remitting seventy percent back to the state, the county will get to keep seventy percent. We'll kind of flip that formula, so that's always good to can, uh, continue and allow for priority preservation in the county. And just kind of quick summary of our next steps. Uh, we're here now doing a presentation here for both our municipalities. We did Chris Field a couple of weeks ago. The grand plan is now available on the website, which is plansomersetmd.org. It's available. There's a link to it on the county website. We have copies uh in the county planning office if anybody would like to. We actually just received our comments from the Maryland Department of Planning. Our goal is to have a public hearing with the County Planning Commission, ideally in June or excuse me, July or August. We're still working on scheduling for that. And with the tentative date of September or October for adoption. And once it's adopted, we will have lovely copies of this book to distribute to the towns and municipalities. I have anything?
So real quick, um, Mr. Brewer, thank you for coming and updating us on the progress you guys have made. It was great work. It looks like it's been a lot time, of course, into it. And in that discussion, you mentioned that um it's been twenty-eight years for you guys to fit close to that for us. We're getting we're over fifteen or post fifteen anyway. Um, and we're going to be looking at doing our our own comprehensive plan. Yes, um, it, I think this question was asked before, but there's a way we can possibly come in and use a lot of the information that you guys have had to create the comment plan we need. Maybe get the same company or get a company that can use, because a lot of what you did did concern municipalities. So they say it could be that that possible, that a way that we could work with the county to to use this information to get hours updated or?
Yes, that that is the benefit of the modern technology is we have everything in a digital format. When the original plan was done on a typewriter in nineteen ninety-six, it was not able to, so we pretty much had to start from scratch. There was no computer when our plan was updated, so we have all of this in computer files. We have, we'll have all the maps and everything. So as I told Chris Field too, we'll be able to work with both our municipalities to kind of help get their plans up to date. Because the goal is after every ten years, you want to revisit it, no more than twenty. Typically, you want to have a new plan updated. The state kind of relaxed thing with starting COVID, there was a little bit of relaxing on that timeline. That's definitely a goal.
Well, there's been, there's been a ton of changes in the county, we mentioned, and in the municipality, and I think it's very important that we um, we look at it sooner rather than later before all this information changes to it. In ourselves, uh.
It takes some time and a little bit of money, I will, I will say. Thanks, I have a business we're having questions for. What's, what's your name and title again? I'm Jesse Brewer, I'm the planning and zoning director for Somerset County.
Yes. Planning the county. What is that? The director?
Yes.
Okay.
And. Next one, we listen to you guys carry that conversation. We're playing Somerset County for that we should go. And yes.
The application check basically. Age is a common also. The, the, the money itself, how much uh for regular business grant and how much for the minority grant. Well, then part of that too is uh don't know exactly, probably end of July, how much money is gonna be there once everything comes in. Now that the budget has improved, we'll get all the final information, then we'll know exactly where we stand.
Lord, don't create a discussion. Then I will proceed to the next item of business. I have a prospect to update on that spread event. Lord, don't bring out manager, pray it right.
Good evening. Again, Somerset Landing, uh, I've had a depth conversation with Ms. Valerie. And she's been insightful. Project, as everyone was aware of, the funding for fiscal year twenty-five was under rational directed spending program. It was expected to receive approval, however, as we know what happened to budget negotiations in Congress with such way that all fiscal year CDS projects were deleted from the budget total. That was across the board and across, unfortunately, the whole country. Valerie is in communication process of requesting with Senator Van Hollen's office to reconsider it for fiscal year twenty-six. It is a slim chance. Uh, but there are other avenues that we're looking at uh for funding uh the CDS funds as one, also requesting a bond bill allocation from the state of Maryland. Uh, the latter uh would be obviously requested through the General Assembly. Uh, other possibilities would be the Maryland Department of Environmental and the U S Department of Agricultural Order and Waste Program. So Valerie and with collaboration with the town, we are looking at other means to, if we can continue with our Somerset Landing um object. Any questions?
Yeah, I think you skipped the line. I don't want to get that big.
Oh, no, I was getting to that. I just wanted to, I want to handle Somerset first because it was more in detail. Okay. So uh then I was working back from, I didn't ever think twice about Somerset Landing, that's all. Thank you, Ms. Valerie. All right, back for landing, back for update. There we go. See what you did. All right. As you know, construction has not yet started. I am in confident communication. In fact, even, you know, a few hours ago, we're chasing. Uh, we're still waiting on the schedule for the contract. The good news is D B F has received the bonds and the insurance. Uh, this, as a recap, concrete repair will be first, then the road rehab, which is again fixing all the plum piping and all that stags and so forth. And then finally, um, the paving will be last, so that we'll definitely celebrate when that happens. Uh, the sanitary district also needs to do a, what they call a test pit for existing water services for the roadway and determine any of the connectors, but I would tell you on radar basis that uh Jason from D B F and myself are kind of pushing Pruitt to get this thing started. So I know there was some work in those city that got delayed, but now it's hard. So now it's place to a school, I believe, coming out, what, next week? This week? So now that will certainly free up some stuff too, so. That's the latest update.
I, I would just say that it's very important for them to realize that about the school part, because the last project we did over in Prince Anne Elementary, it started the day school started and ended. That way, real school, remember that and all that sidewalk something with direct the entire school year, but um anyway, so if there's any way we can.
They are certainly, Pruitt is aware of it. He has walked that street a number of times. It could, because I'm thinking, okay, they have to close a road off. They can do it in like sections, small sections, this, this side, this side. And uh, yeah, just gotta, we gotta make it happen. So I do not want to be sitting here from August or September. Hopefully, we're all the ribbon public is celebrating, so. That's the latest. Any more discussion on that? And I will proceed to Somerset. Yeah, I hit that reverse. My apologies. Lord, don't be brave. Discussion on Somerset. Mr. Daley, everything else?
Yeah, yeah, the only uh, Mr. President, the only thing that I want to add is that the other program that is available is community development block grant. The problem with that is that they have not, the state has not released a window to apply because the federal administration hasn't approved funds for the program. So everybody's in the same row. We can go for up to eight hundred, the max for block grant is eight hundred thousand dollars. So I think we might still need to add some, get some other funding, but that would, that would go a long way to helping the project out. Um, I've got that in my other towns. I'll keep monitoring it and, and certainly, as you know, as soon as it opens. If we do get a window and if we are funded, I think that's one area that we definitely should go for. Because I do believe uh the statistics came out about a week, a couple of weeks ago. And I, I believe that, well, I don't believe, I know Princess Anne is still block man.
Discussion on that. Just now, it was a further update on the uh abilities there, so that for D B G. I believe. Didn't say it well. Application, yeah, but. But.
Oh, God. I don't think there's anything else left.
Just make sure, don't.
Yeah, no.
Hey, put them while I'm working.
Yeah.
Secondly, start some stuff, right? And know we allocate which four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the uh town harbor fund. What's the status on that? I know there's certain days we receive comprehensive study, like, well, it's that maybe we thought it's right. That's four or five years. One about here. Let's list the stats that four hundred and fifty thousand allocated for some stuff. And we proceeded and starting to get certain things on the project.
There's three hundred thousand earmarked for the street. A hundred and fifty thousand for Somerset Landing.
I think that was.
Three hundred thousand for.
That grab.
Yes, and a hundred and fifty for uh for Somerset Landing. The town still within possession of those four fifty thousand. However, uh, I need to get what it said because believe that the town paid eighteen thousand dollars to D B F for work at Somerset Landing, that the town paid, town paid itself, and can get reimbursed on the hundred and fifty that we've already put in, so we need to make that happen. That'll give us an extra eighteen, twenty thousand dollars back to the town.
Now, because I was thinking that we, we allocate four hundred and fifty thousand to that project.
No.
From the harbor, it's also three hundred for.
Yeah, it was three hundred and one fifty. Four fifty total.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that we still have, that we, we were still in possession of.
Yeah, that would lead to believe that it was four hundred and fifty thousand allocated, because that was a match funded from Senator Van Hollen's office. Working on that project, so I know that you worked for several other towns.
Well, yes, I did, sir, and uh I can tell you that I, I worked pretty hard to get a in Shore County, we had an old school project. We requested one point five million in this special congressional funding. It got through the senator's office, um, with no problem. The Senate Appropriations Committee killed it, and now everybody doesn't get anything. We also, then I turned around and I went to the state route. Went to state route for bond bill, five hundred thousand for the state project, okay? And y'all know what's happening up at the state, so that didn't go either. Now, I don't want to get in the next couple, well, honestly, in the next year or two, I don't want to get anybody's hopes built up that there is funding coming down, that there's going to be funding available. Which leads me to another point that I just two hours ago got a message. Uh, I'm funded through the Department of Housing, through the development. Uh, my position is, my programs. We just got word that we need to have those funds spent by July the fifth. Any carryover, because they may not be there. At work, yes, yeah, and we're talking maybe, I think, three, five thousand dollars for this circuit for Princess Anne alone. I don't know how much Chris Field has, maybe ten thousand. And up in my circuit up in Pittsville, I got about ten thousand dollars that's sitting there. I don't know how to spend ten thousand dollars in two weeks, except get myself a gigantic raise. There's so many hours you can work, but that just happened. And the reason they're asking, the reason the state is saying get your request in to get reversed by July fifth is because they can't guarantee the money's going to be there. Just so that you know. So all this funding, all this stuff that we're dealing out though, and not good times, folks, not good.
What's uh we're talking about? We're talking about, I don't know. Somerset Landing. Was just completely irrelevant. Had. It needed four years. All the years back, you know, I know you worked over down to. This is the second. At the funding. We, we're certain that any project, the numbers that the atmosphere made. Not what we've worked on the past few years. You've worked through this town for one year now. That's not what the study leaves me that. It's me from actually recorded. They haven't wrote that, who worked on Somerset Landing project and determined what was actually said. And allocated.
So I, I would agree with that statement. I was like. No, no, I would like to have us go back and look at that because um I think, uh, in my memory, it was three, three hundred and a hundred and fifty. Uh, three hundred and forty backwards, a hundred and fifty.
That's right, that is correct.
Uh, there was a five hundred thousand dollars that we were hoping to get from Senator Van Hollen's office.
That's correct.
And our match to that would have been twenty percent, that a hundred and fifty was sort of our way of having that hundred that match if it would qualify. It may not qualify. I would live, but that was the discussion we had was the, so let's go back, let's get the information and before we start. Um.
Yeah, let's go back, let's look at the.
Relying on memory, let's go back and, and get this to the actual game. And, and present things. We've got a work session coming up in July. You can reevaluate all that, I would say, with a report, right? We can go back.
Now. Okay, well, let me try to understand what you're looking for. Are you looking for moving the hundred and fifty thousand to something else? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, I think the question was, is what did we originally?
A hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand for Bedford and a hundred and fifty thousand for Somerset Landing. That's what we did. Well, we can convert, we can convert that.
We also pay it out here, starting out with their engineering fees already as well. You think that one?
My understanding, you mean for Somerset Landing?
Yes.
My understanding is that there was a, a D B F bill for about eighteen thousand dollars that the town paid prior to prior to us changing, making the change in the budget on the park. And what I'm saying is, because of the fact that we had, we had D B F put everything together, what they had already been paid, as well as what they were anticipating, the project and cost was a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. That included the eighteen thousand dollars that the town already spent. So what I'm saying is, that's eighteen thousand dollars that will come back to the town. The issue really is whether or not we're going to get funding to do Somerset Landing through grants. Otherwise, if the town's going to continue down the path, you're going to have to take out a loan. And then, once you take out a loan, you're going to have to figure out how to pay for that, and obviously, it's going to need an assessment on the property owners.
You just pull up the old games and go back.
Yeah, no, we will. I think that's a good, we should do that.
That would be.
Yes, yes.
Right. The project's special, what's giving to, I have a number eight, what will be right play agenda items, so. So, the output. Has the budget on here, correct? That had to be done prior to June fourth. Would there be a break next? Would there be any?
I would say I'd like to request to have, uh, for the ethics board and also, uh. Asian plantings on, have the, the members from whoever copied, would need to be sworn in. I would like to request to have the, uh, there's, uh, we have total seven members. They're gone tomorrow, okay, okay, I won't forget it, thank you, alright.
That's it, uh, this town is probably, uh, motion to, uh, adjourn it, Mr. President, I think there's. There's been a home for request for a closed session on real estate personnel, is that correct?
No, no, I had. Yeah, I, I have, I'd like to announce, it's maybe a question, that's okay, I know this isn't, no, from open up to the public, but I did. Didn't wanna make a couple announcements.
Yeah, potentially the work sessions, I'd like to explain to the public on the way out, this is the guy who passed, um. That would, that be. Work sessions are not for the council to be able to work on.
Well, I understand, you're saying we can't, if you look at other towns as well.
I understand it, but I know they've had some. Yes, sir, but the year be out, allow me to speak, allow you to speak as well, but specifically speaking, based on Carter, with, uh, Carter's setup, these aren't my rules. These are intel rules, work sessions have been allocated for, for missionaries to be able to work on certain. Town businessmen, public meetings, we have to go the first week of the month, uh, that's only for the public as well, before we did, um. There were handout cards, and that's what certain other towns do as well, you can currently handout cards, there's requests to speak with everyone, so we're all in sync and harmony together. Um, this is against protocol, but I will, would like to open for up to a lot of you to be able to speak.
I was just gonna make an announcement, but I did have a question that I think needs to be answered, to give me some words of guidance, okay, well, first of all, I just wanted to say. Uh, we, I want to announce our Bible school, uh, and I have some cards, I hope you take, take them. Uh, it's, it starts January fourth, the Tuesday, next Tuesday, week from Tuesday. Um, please invite, invite the kids out, we're gonna feed them, we'll feed them at five thirty, the Bible school starts at six, we're gonna have. We have games, we're gonna have, uh, uh, snacks, and, you know, and recreation's gonna be a great time. And also, I wanted to let you know that, uh, we are having, I get, I said open house, I guess it would be a church house. From one to three, on, um, Saturday, Jan-, uh, June twenty eighth, you probably noticed there's a lot of changes on the outside. But it's a time to come and look at the changes that we had inside as well. I do have, and I thought, I thought this was on the agenda at, at work session about talking about the, the park. Um, I don't, I don't know, I'm new, I'm new to all this, so I don't understand how things work here. But, uh, you know, I'm jumping on the bits, I mean, I think, I mean, if, if, if it's not gonna. I, I, I don't wanna be on a committee that just sits around, doesn't do anything, I've got a lot of, you know, I've got too much things to do. So at some point, I'd just like to talk to either some of the council members, or Jay, or somebody that can tell me the process of. What it means to be on these committees, and actually get, you know, things moving, get the things done, because otherwise. I mean, uh, maybe someone else can do a better job, I mean, committing it myself.
So you all have, the, I wish, uh, the flesh, you got a legislative meeting, you have the ethics board planning, building. Glad we brought that gentleman's seat, I'm not kidding about that.
I also, one of the things, uh, for your information, I understand that, um, the gentleman spoke at the last meeting, this pickle. So, um, I don't know if he gave the information to the town, but if he did, we will also put it on our sign. If you send that, if you send that information.
Yes, sir, I'm about to get to that, he did get that information to town, we posted it on the website, also, um, they like tried to, you're coming down by the local park. Also, I'd like to emphasize, you're a brochure, you brought here tonight, if you would give that to the town, fascinating, he did, uh, post that for the community. And I would encourage you to reach out to Main Street, they have a fairly big audience, um, to reach a lot of people with your advertising.
Yeah, it was just vacation Bible school.
I also like to encourage you that a lot of our committees, um, in Oak Park, in that sense, um, was part of. We had three, uh, three of that back rehabilitated program, right, right, because the last time with that, that happened, the year two thousand. Three years ago, we started the program in two thousand and three. This is a plaza clean government of that board, so you all are responsible for conducting, holding, about to be here on page, so feel free to reach out to other members. Reach out to the other member, okay, Oak Park committee, so you guys start having the meetings, network with the, uh. Main Street organization, and Chamber of Commerce, and many other organizations, but also the great community, communicate. Not just with members of the council, but with the county manager.
Well, I have talked to you about it, and I've actually reached out to my, I think, who's the president, or the chair of that committee, but I haven't gotten any.
Yeah, so that's how it works, it's, it's a team, after we're all a team, it's not just, uh, the council or. Personally, nothing leaves me, it's just my job to help these meetings, for everyone, take it fair for everyone. Now, that, so, here tonight, you know, for, you all wanna have that change in the future for work sessions to be open to. All this, right back to saying, with the council, we can make that change when the town started.
Well, I like, I, 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 I think, I think you, and if we're, if we take our time to come here, I think it would be advantageous for you to hear. Some of the, even the work session as well.
This problem, both the ways already. Those changes are, they to be raised for the council, so that, that be, um, they voted on by the meeting, but. They say over the years, won't be allowing to have it on work sessions, it actually became very productive, because there were a hundred different ideas and things. But really delayed the processing council, and it would have the pressure to get certain things done, to be able to present it in a public meeting, just for the first three, seven months, so. But changes and amendments are always, uh, welcome, I would encourage everyone from the public to continue to come out, worship, pay his worth in town. Um, be an asset to the town like Prince Dan, so we can all make this town thrive in a better place, right, where we live. Uh, without further ado, um, just get another hand, I would like to open for who I'm leaving back.
Yeah, there was some chatter when Dave, uh, you were wanting to do the update, so, um, a couple of questions for you, once it is approved. Uh, what is the timeframe and the window in which the application, window will be opened, the exception?
Can we get your name for recommendation?
Oh, yeah, Jeanne Cotton.
Thank you for coming out, one of the things again is, uh, we're coming up with the, make sure the application. Is approved and all with, with the money, uh, one example is, you know, would have been, um. We need to adopt the resolution first, like, and once that, and that's usually done at the legislative meeting, and then have the applications come in at the end of the month. Um, you do. To that, first step first.
Okay, and has it been determined what format the application will be, um, submitted in electronically, like through a website, or? What that format would be, has that been determined?
We're, we're in the process of finalizing that.
Okay.
Good, good question, thank you, all these are great questions.
No problem, um, and one more, once it is finalized, assuming everything gets approved.
Yes.
Uh, where can we receive the updates on like eligibility requirements and how to submit and all that?
Through social media, I, I don't know if you're on Facebook, or, or, that, that's the biggest part, we also post it. Around town, any, any updates, post office, you know, library, town hall, we have it up also, uh, sign. Or electronic sign, and Instagram.
Okay.
So all those, and, and feel free to check our website, too.
Exactly, would the website be where all the, the description of everything, the annual written regulations, the application? Whether it be filled out online, I'm not sure if you guys wanna do that, but you could download it.
Right, and, and there'd be like a link.
The website would be.
But for communication, on the social media, but the website be the main one to go on in detail, and then have links.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Cotton.
We're working on, we have no prayers, so, here in Somerset County. From our corporate prayers, we'll add different ones for each prayer.
Uh, yeah, again, just to follow up on the business grants, um, what, were you saying in your presentation about it, Jay? That it was contingent upon. Funding? The whole thing was contingent upon.
No, no, sorry, it's just, we'll know exactly at the end of July, how much money is there, but that, that's, no, it's just. For budgetary, you know, is, is the final amount, how much for plus.
Do you, that has determined like how many grants and the dollar amount of the grants available?
Could have a play, isn't it?
Thank you.
So, thank you.